Aloha and good evening, everyone. Mahalo for joining us tonight. We will be kicking off our third interview of the night with Julie, with Holaka Inaba, who is running for county council seat six rerunning and he's currently incumbent. County councils, or sorry, district eight. Encompasses Kailua Estates, Kaloko, Kalahua, and many other areas in the Kona district. This is my third interview for tonight, so catching up to me here. And then joining us as well are Ontu and Shanti, who will be interviewing council member Holaka Inaba this evening. Shanti is a compost practitioner and agricultural worker in the district and Ontu serving the community in a number of different ways, including cultural heritage preservation and local food security. And to kick us off, council member Holaka Inaba will just give us a quick introduction on himself and explaining why he chose to run for public office.
Hi, Velina Kialohakako. I'm Dr. Holaka Goro Inaba. I'm the current council member for District Eight North Kona. Just a little bit about myself, I was born and raised here in the Moku of Kona on Hawaii Island. My father's Ohana, the Inabas come from Honolulu, North Kona. And my mom originally from Hilo, but a longtime resident of Kona since the eighties. And just, you know, education wise, I'm a graduate of Kamehameha Schools Kapalama. I hold a degree in communication studies and integrated educational studies, masters in health and strategic communication, and recently completed my doctorate in educational leadership. And this is gonna be my second time running for office. I was fortunate enough to be put into office in 2020. And I'm really honored to hopefully continue serving our North Kona community and the entire county of Hawaii as we move forward and doing so with a focus on the future, but a grounding in what is culturally correct and respectful of not just the host culture, but the culture of Hawaii as we know it today as well. So mahalo nui for having me and excited to talk about some of the work that we have coming down the pipeline, especially as it relates to the platform issues and topics you folks have as we'll be back.
Lovely. Thank you for that. I guess we can start with our first interview question from Ontu or Shanti. Ontu, you're muted.
Okay, well, got that out of the way. So how have you advocated for your community and what community projects have you worked on?
I think as an as an advocate of my community, I've been extremely responsive. And part of, I think, this role as a council member is being responsive and not one week later, but making sure that community is getting back or hearing back from me immediately, addressing the issues and advocating on behalf of not just the big picture platform issues, but the day to day, which is, I think, oftentimes what we kind of fail or don't do as well as all levels of government. So that's kind of been one area I really focus on is being responsive and being there for the community. In terms of some projects, I've worked on some, some projects, especially relating to education. And education is kind of where my background comes from. So I've worked on a project involving both Kialakehe High School students as well as students at Kikula or Ewanui Kai Malino. And that's to really involve them in what it is that county government does and how they can be involved with what decisions are made, how to testify, general structure of county government, who's in charge of what, what the county's not in charge of sometimes. And that's been one thing. Another cool project I've worked on with a constituent of mine who recently moved home from college and has a degree in planning, Chloe Delaney. We've been doing a land use planning and education course. So focusing especially on the way that our ina is used, how to engage the Leeward Planning Commission, the Planning Department decisions, and especially the county council when it comes to large rezoning projects and projects that affect not just infrastructure, but water, solid waste, wastewater, all of these issues that are really important to us. And that's kind of been a pet project of mine is making sure or increasing the awareness and the participation of our community in the decision making that we do as a county. And beyond that, there's been some other things, you know, I've been a big supporter of the West Hawaii Veteran Cemetery as my predecessor, Auntie Karen Eoff, was. And her predecessor, Auntie Andrew Pilago. And, you know, we, we get a little pot of money as council members to support small initiatives for nonprofits and for our parks and rec facilities. So I've been very honored to continue supporting those initiatives for new memorials and maintenance needs for those types of projects in the cemetery. But yeah, I'm very honored to be working on those, those components that involve community.
Thank you.
Thanks, I'm Shanti. All right. Thanks for answering that. What do you see as the three most pressing issues facing your district?
You know, I'll be honest, fortunately, District Eight is is one of, I would say, the easier council districts as we don't have very many of the county parks and rec facilities. The generally, our roads are okay. But as a personal kind of preference, I would say, making sure that we, we fix up the roads that are problematic. And those roads being Kinalani, Palani, and Kaloko Drive, those are kind of our, our more ragged roads at this time. And I've been advocating for those projects to be taken care of. Palani Road hopefully will be done in the next month. Kinalani awaiting state funding to, to get that project done. I believe there's an estimated $20 million price tag on that project. So it's not something the county can get done right away. And Kaloko hopefully by the end of May as well. So, you know, infrastructure on the roads, that's, that's one. We do know for many years now, the Kialakehe Waste Water Treatment Plant has been an issue where we are seeing 1.8 million gallons of R2 water being dumped into a lava tube near the police station. And, you know, that's something that was important to Mayor Roth when he first ran, myself included, continuing to advocate and have communication with the Department of Environmental Management with the county. Right now, there is a lot of focus on the Hilo Waste Water Treatment Plant as the director and, and others have pointed to, you know, imminent disaster at that location. So Kialakehe right now is a little on the back burner. And overall, those are the two kind of major ones, infrastructure and the DEM. There's also, you know, generally supporting more agricultural activities and initiatives, not just for District Eight, however, but seeing it across, across our county and especially with a tough year for our farmers, especially with avocado and, and the coffee rust, you know, it's been a really tough year. And figuring out how to partner, not just between the departments, but with the legislature and the state as well to see how we can best support our farmers to continue doing the good work that they do. And I would say those are kind of the three biggest priorities for, for District Eight and the county in general.
Okay, so this is under affordable housing. What paradigm shifting solutions can you offer so that rising real estate prices and values don't correspondingly increase the cost of housing and cost of living, pushing out locals from the housing market?
Affordable housing, one of my favorite topics and something council member Kimball and I have been really working together on. I would say since closer to the beginning of our term and council member Kimball and I have been the newbies on the council. It's been a fun project to take on Chapter 11 of our county code, which is the Affordable Housing Chapter. And we have worked on a complete overhaul. Earlier, I guess it was late last year, the county council approved the resolution, however, to authorize the urging the Office of Housing and Community Development here to conduct the study as to the effectiveness of our current chapter. So we're waiting right now. But some of the, and I'll say, I can't share too much being that there's, this is a public forum and we have the sunshine law, so I can't be sharing too many details. But overall, ensuring that development of mercury housing, of resorts, of industrial areas are actually resulting in affordable units of housing being developed. Right now, there are some loopholes in our county system and our county code that we want to clean up. Beyond that, there's been a lot of talk and there's, there is always a lot of talk at the county level, at the state level regarding supporting the development of affordable housing. But we don't necessarily see adequate funding going to this. So that's something that I'd like to see and it's actually something that we're working on right now. I just got an email back today from the county attorneys, hopefully hoping to put a bill forward that we, we might see real soon. And that's to guarantee a certain, certain percentage of our annual real property tax going directly to the development of affordable housing in our county. So it's, we all have kind of our kuleana as, as county, as state, as federal elected officials. And within the county wheelhouse, we're doing what we can to change the chapter to hopefully not just encourage, but to require that affordable housing be developed if, you know, large scale resorts and stuff and, and even, even large scale residential developments are gonna happen. And then with that, we can hopefully see more units being, being built across our island. And some other things too, sometimes it's, it's not about always building new, building new affordable housing, but looking at the existing units we have, what can we do to make sure that they continue to be inhabitable for those that are no longer inhabitable? You know, perhaps making changes in our county code that allow for that affordable housing dollars to be used to rehabilitate those units so that they can be reinvested into our housing market. And, and hopefully specifically for those residing on our island. And that's, that's some of the details I know we really want to know about that. Might not be able to share that much, but those are things that we have thought about and have included in, in the bill we'll be putting forward.
Thank you. In regards to native Hawaiian rates, what do you see as the most pressing issue facing native Hawaiians on Hawaii Island? And what will you do about it?
Pressing issue for native Hawaiians, it's not a new issue, I would say. It's, it's a continued effort to ensure that we have open space, that we have access to our natural resources. We continue to see unfortunately, sometimes irresponsible and distasteful things done to our ina. And I want to broaden the question perhaps to say that it's not just native Hawaiians. Some of the problems that native Hawaiians have been experiencing in Hawaii for generations are now a problem of people of Hawaii, not just native Hawaiians. And those, those who have lived here for 30 years, 40 years, it's, it's the same issues, access, overdevelopment, lack of infrastructure to support, not just the people who live here, but the visitors who visit here as well. And, you know, what we can do about it, we've been following up as a council, I feel very closely to ensure that we're, we're following through with the PANK, a public open space fund, to ensure that we're purchasing what we can as a county to preserve those things. In terms of infrastructure, I've been a very, I would say staunch advocate for making sure that infrastructure is created or maintained as we see further development and making sure that when the council hears projects, regardless of size, whether it's 10, three units of someone trying to do something or a thousand units like we're seeing before the council right now out at Waikoloa, that there is always a sense of what effect will this have on the community who lives here and the generations to come? Because we won't see sometimes a development appear before us today and know the full impact. But knowing that 40 years from now, 50 years from now, 60 years, what those impacts might be, I think, is very important. So that's what I've been very much advocating for and trying to make our council aware of in our deliberations for different projects.
Thank you. And this one is about land use and development. The lease on military basis is about to expire soon. And how do you propose the local government should proceed at this time? Do you think the county has a role in the upcoming decision making process, ability to influence it?
I think that, I think it's a conversation perhaps that the council might have. While the council doesn't have, you know, the authority on, on those leases directly, we certainly can have discussions and perhaps make a resolution to see where the council stands on whether we would oppose further use of these lands, especially on Hawaii Island by the military. I do want to point out, while we have seen irresponsible and environmentally disastrous actions by the military, especially most recently with Red Hill. And we know that there's continued bombing at Puhakula. I do, at the same time, want to point out, at least here on Hawaii Island, the good work that Puhakula has done most recently with the large wildfires on Hawaii Island. And, and I'll say outright, I don't support continued use of these lands by the military. But at the same time, I do want to acknowledge the good that has, you know, been done to save some of our forests and, you know, further tens of thousands of acres that were burned. And I'd like to just acknowledge Puhakula's efforts in that last fire. But overall, my, my stance on land used by the military in Hawaii would be a no. And happy to have conversation when the legislature and when state departments might have their discussions on that as well.
Regarding infrastructure, have you followed the issues related to Hu'onua bioenergy? Do you feel informed enough to state out your present position?
Yeah, you know, that's an interesting one. I, energy, I do support Hawaii's move to 100% clean energy by 2045. And one of the champions, I think, on the council right now is, is council member Kimball when it comes to energy. We get all kinds of takes, right, on Hu'onua. But based on, based on the information that I do know and the conversations that I, I do hear, I'm, I'm not inclined at this time to support that project, especially for the rates that we'd be paying, burning. And obviously, we would probably like to see more agriculturally beneficial trees out, especially on the Hama'ua coast. But I'm not sure Hu'onua is the answer right now. And, and that's kind of the same answer I gave two years ago when I first ran.
This is about food security and agriculture. What is your definition of food security sovereignty for Hawaii? And what and how would you implement programs to fulfill your statement if you're elected?
Food security, I think, on the most basic understanding is for us in Hawaii, if the ship stops coming, are we gonna be okay? And that's the most boiled down version of it. Food security as a, as a family versus as a, as an island versus as a state, I, I think are different things. For our family, you know, people hunt, people dive, people fish. So on the individual basis, there's, there's that. But I think as a, as a state and as a county, we're not seeing enough support for programs and for organizations who are doing the good work that we might not see the production right now. And I can give one example of this and I'd like to make a shout out to, you know, Hui, Malama, Ikialo, Ulili, and Pa'ouwilo. And, and recently, they had planted a ulu grove. And that's something that, you know, we, they're out there on the ina, they're planting this. And it might be five years before we're seeing, but that ulu is gonna give ulu forever. And those kinds of projects don't require a lot of funding. But we're, we, we need to do better as a state, as a county. I think at the county level, I think we only have a couple positions in the agriculture sector of research and development. And I think we need to do better, have more positions, give more funding to those positions and to those initiatives. We have a lot of partnership with the University of Hawaii at Hilo, oftentimes for agricultural initiatives. But more needs to be done. And that's kind of the crossover sometimes between or, or divide, I would say, between us as policymakers and, and the administration and what initiatives, you know, really are gonna come to fruition. And not dabbling too much into that. But for sure, being supportive. And when the time comes, if there is, you know, a request to, to have increased funding for those programs, to create new positions within those divisions in R and D to support those types of initiatives at the county level.
Regarding sea level rise adaptation, by way of sea wall permits, counties have the discretion to regulate setbacks and permits for hardening shorelines. What other preparations should we be making now for sea, sea level rise in order to adapt?
I think we have to be mindful. We hear, or the planning department receives applications, sometimes for rezoning, sometimes for special permits. One of them last year was for a lot, a large house right on the water on Ali'i Drive who doesn't have a septic tank. And, you know, we see county agencies approve these types of special permits that would increase not just portable water use, but increase the wastewater that's going directly into the, the ocean right there. And those are decisions, I think, that we have to really start thinking more about as a council, as a department, as Leeward and when we're planning commissions. It's bad for us now. And as we continue to see the sea level rise, we're, we're gonna have inundation, probably not just of, of those cesspools, but of the entire structure. We need to be more mindful. And right now, the county is going through a revision of the general plan, which is the guiding document for all development and, and development land use decisions within the county. I do think that we are, that I need to have a lot more focus. And, and that's really a planning department led initiative. But that's, that's something that needs to be considered as we make this revision to this master document that guides what we do on this island. And there is some funds, specific budget line items within the county budget, focus on coastal zone management. Recently, I, we had some discussion about that as well at the council. But generally, it's, it's, it's those votes that we have to take and those decisions that we, we make that need to be better. Beyond, you know, the, the ocean's coming. We can't do sometimes anything for existing structures, but we sure can make better decisions about what we will allow to be put up or changed or what uses we would allow that may be changed right now.
Well, I'll do a little follow on, on that with about the wastewater. Half the city state's cesspools, about 49,000, are on Hawaii Island. The county's been in violation with the Safe Drinking Water Act and EPA federal rules and regulations since 2010, when the county took over responsibility for the large capacity cesspools, Puhakula and Naua Laihu. What do you suggest we do to improve our aging infrastructure?
This is a tough question because it's a question that the council has continued to ask of, of the Department of Environmental Management. With this new administration, we have Director Monsour, who comes with a lot of background from the city and county of Honolulu with wastewater infrastructure and services. And it's kind of like the chicken before the egg or the egg before the chicken situation a lot of times. And it's, you know, we need the funding, but we need the plans. And, and there's this, this toss. We just approved, I believe, 148 million dollar bond ordinance to grant the mayor's administration, you know, borrowing capacity for certain projects, one of them being the Hilo Waste Water Treatment Plant. We, all of that funding is going there. We're not seeing it at Kialakehe or Naua Laihu or Puhakula. But like I said earlier, that's, that is the infrastructure that is imminent collapse in on itself kind of deal right now. And I think that's kind of the action we need to take. Yes, was that a, a big amount of money? Of course, I think only 14 million was gonna go to the, the Hilo Waste Water Treatment Plant. And that's just for design, however, you know, the actual carrying out of the project is over $100 million. But within the scope of the county right now, I think we're doing, we're doing something. And I, it's, it's not, I haven't seen significant action on the wastewater infrastructure since we've been in, since I've been in office, starting in December 2020. And this is kind of the first major action we're seeing, unfortunately, due to, you know, emergency type situations. But, you know, some of the other council members had recently gone to a NACO conference up in Washington DC, which is the Association of Counties across the nation. And, you know, came back with a lot of good ideas as to funding. So I know, you know, they're gonna be, especially after the administration on trying to get funding from the federal level, especially to figure out what we can do with our wastewater infrastructure here in Hawaii County. Funding from the federal level, especially to figure out what we can do with our wastewater infrastructure here in Hawaii County.
Thank you.
Alright, so I'm gonna ask you a question dear to my heart. Uh one important aspect of the zero waste movement is rendering green waste into beneficial. Agricultural products such as compost and mulch. And making it easily accessible in um distribution facilities around the island. Will you help to move a plan forward to expedite that process? Or have you?
See, uh i- that's a good question too because. We've had discussions recently with the mulching uh facility in Hilo and. Yes, I'm a supporter, especially because of initiatives like compost therapy that you're a part of uh here in West Hawaii. For our community, myself, before, you know, just throwing the cardboard away. In in the in the dump, not even at the recyclable um receptacles. Even now, making sure I'll pull, sometimes food goes into the regular waste. Pulling it out, but a lot of times it's it's that education and that awareness that. Organizations like yours um. Provide to the community that sh- change behavior because. As a county, yes, you can, you can offer, say, receptacles, which I. Ye- yes, we need to do, but oftentimes it's still the human behavior component of it that we need to change, right? Uh they can provide the bins, but if people are just. Throwing their food into their wastebasket, i- it's too late already by the time we get there, so. In the DEM picture, which oversee the Department of Environmental Management in that scope. There's a lot going on with solid waste, but more importantly, with the wastewater issues right now. I'd like to see a lot more done there and I'm most supportive of of. Of the initiatives and the projects. For zero waste. But I'll honestly say, I believe the department is. The focus is more so on the wastewater at this time and. Not to say that we cannot work together moving forward to try and make. Make this small incremental changes to improve. What the county has to offer and what the county can do to sort those things and and provide. For composting and and mulching services in our county. And and sometimes it's the best thing is in partnership. With our organizations, yeah, when. When the county doesn't have to do it itself, but working with those who are who love it and who are doing it.
This is about social issues. Which marginalized communities do you consider yourself an advocate for? And what policies do you plan on enacting to support these communities?
For myself, I mean, you know, I I'm Caucasian. Japanese and native Hawaiian and I do feel that I I always try to advocate. For native Hawaiians first and foremost being. Being. That marginalized people, but the people of this island of this Aina. A- and I think that's first and foremost where I come from, however, overall. It's. It's for everybody, like I said earlier, it's taking it because the problems we experience are oftentimes experienced. By local Japanese, by local Filipino, by local Chinese. By Caucasians who live here as well. I- it's everybody and. And I don't have, I would say, specific policies for a specific group. Um that I would. Have to, that I'd be able to identify and share. Responsibly and and respectfully.
So sorry.
And I do wanna add while while you look up that question. For myself, I still work in the school system. I work. Um at Ewanui Kai Malino today and. That's one of the the best things for me. In this role as as a elected official, it's still having that ability to work. Not just with the community and nonprofit organizations, but to work with our kids. Because it reminds you, right, of why you do what you do. I got into this to serve community, but what what you're always thinking about is not the community of today, but. Of the next generation and the generation after that. And I, that's just kind of. I would say a very. A very much strong and guiding force in in the decisions that I make. And and the value system that I come from and and it's working with. All of all of those Kiki, native Hawaiians, non-native Hawaiians that that brings you to your senses and. Keeps your senses in line with what you. You first set out to do, which I think sometimes people in office might drift from.
May I actually ask you a quick question? Um what are you most excited about in, like, you see your kids, this new generation? What excites you the most about them that's coming from them, like, as new, like, new humans? Like, what is it?
I think it's this sense of purpose a- and and I'm young. And I feel almost, you know, of their generation too sometimes and it's not a. You're trying to. Be re- rebellious or you're trying to fight, but you're just doing what is right and you see that so clearly in this next generation. And you see so many local kids going on to to be. Everything good that our community wants for them, from being a pharmacist to being an attorney. Some of my friends, some of my friends, you know, fighting for water rights um. In the court system as attorneys. Uh i- it's just incredible and. That's another thing, if you you have this inspiration because you're not, you're not working hard for nothing, you're working hard for. The generation, right, people you who you already see working hard and that's like, I think, the most inspiring and. Touching part of of this job and and the ability to serve community.
Yeah, the kids are definitely okay.
And I'm gonna take kind of the dark side of that, maybe for not the youngest generation, but the one about our um. Our drug epidemic and um what solutions would you propose to combat the drug addiction crisis, particularly the mass epidemic?
You know, for. At the county level. We have police, we have prosecution. Uh I do know of initiatives on Oahu, however, and I think oftentimes we know that. Drug use is associated sometimes with me- mental illness and we see. Programs on Oahu, um some of my friends who work in the ER at Queens, you know, they go out into. Those hard hit areas when it comes to drugs like Chinatown and and they're out there working consistently. With uh some of these individuals um. And not just to get them clean off of drugs, but to make sure that they have. Uh mental health resources as well and I think that's oftentimes the piece that we miss, right, is. Our friends and our family, you know, mental health can take anybody. Down a dark path real quick and it's it's making sure that we're we're solid in that arena. As well um is providing those resources and facilities for. For helping people to get off of drugs, which we don't have currently and on the west side, any any significant or. A large facility. But. I do support those types of initiatives that focus. Not only on drug use, but on on mental health as a whole and. Those aren't necessarily within the county wheelhouse, but. Since the question was asked, that's kind of where where I stand and and. Knowing what's happening out on the streets, especially in the city, um supporting those kinds of those kinds of programs and services.
Mahalo.
Uh re- regarding tourism, final question. How can we ensure that the tourism industry is of service to our working families rather than the other way around? What ways can the the county do those things?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say. We make decisions, a lot of times it goes back to development, to how much more are we willing to take? Um and and what will we do to ensure some type of give back to the community? Uh you know, if if certain projects are gonna be allowed. Wh- I would like to see impact fees. Um you know, for visitors to the to the islands, if you wanna visit certain state. Or county parks, especially a county, because we don't have that infrastructure, that system set up yet. Making sure that we allow. Space and availability for local. Families and local people to go and enjoy those spots too, because the more we allow and create. An increase in tourism, the less we'll see, I believe. Of availability of resources and and places to enjoy for local people and. And while there are initiatives to to make sure that we're continuing to purchase open space and stuff, we have what we have right now. And sometimes you have to put a limit and and I'm supportive, most supportive of putting those limits and those stops. Um when when it's appropriate and. An example being, you know, YPO Valley right now, it's it's not a. Tourism thing, it's it's more a safety thing with the road, but. It gives a place the opportunity and it gives us the opportunity to see a place without such heavy impact. It's not necessarily how. I would say tourism is gonna serve the local people, but it's it's how tourism might not have such a negative impact impact. On local people and I think that's always what I try to think about is, how do we lessen? Negative impact because we love our home, but. There are parts of our home that are just, you know. They're not optimal right now, so how do you remove those things and those causes that? That are making our home less enjoyable, that are making our home less of the Hawaii we love and. And sometimes it's not new initiatives, it's just making slight changes, so. I would say that, yeah, impact fees. Charging for tourism um at at certain facilities. And just being aware of what decisions we make that will allow for continued. The continued cycle or pattern of the tourism we've known for the last hundred years.
Thank you. Maybe one more question from onto before we wrap up for the evening.
This should be a good one, um a fun one. Um how would you foster and nurture small business and startups?
In Kona, lately especially, you see a lot of like snack and little food um businesses, you see. One of our friends makes homemade soaps, growing all of her own flowers and stuff to put in the soaps. Um supporting those, you know, we have our Small Business Development Center. Hearing in Kona, making sure I think that community knows about those types of resources to help them. Help themselves and when we talk about economy, a lot of times, it's always this this big picture. Oh, this is gonna create five hundred jobs and and yes, we need jobs, we need. Sometimes big projects to sustain a lot of people, but. We gotta give our own people the tools. To create and to sustain their own businesses and that's what. I'm loving to see recently is is those small businesses, um you know, whether it's. People just doing treats or or those soaps, it's. It just allows money to be created here and to be spent here when we support one another and. And that's that idea, right, that we're not. Only buying and exporting from outside, we're not. Seeing all of our money leaving, we're we're actually gonna be supporting our own and and to the extent possible. Making sure that when we have these businesses, we set them up as best as can so they can provide. Whether it's the services or the products at the most. Affordable where they still make money, but our local people can afford to purchase the items as well, so I think it's. It's that balance, right, making sure that they're successful financially, but that we can also afford to support our own. And I, when we see that, I think is when. We don't have to have so much reliance on on outside forces, but. We have our, we have our resources right here and we can support our own. Within our island and with within all of the islands.
Mahalo.
Thank you, Councilmember Member Inaba for providing many examples tonight of different initiatives within your district and also, I think, helping us. Continue to better understand the the breakdown between the council and the administration. And the state legislature as well. Um I really appreciate your time and thanks to everyone on Facebook who is potentially watching. This livestream right now. Um these will be posted on the holy Facebook page and can be accessible and shared following the interview. But good night, everyone, and mahalo.
Mahalanoi folks for having me and um for for creating this forum for not. Just not just our county level, but for our state level candidates as well. It's very important that our community know. Where candidates stand on issues and and you folks provide this opportunity, so a big mahalo to you and have a great long weekend.